Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the Goffstown School Board meeting. It is Monday, May 3rd. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:02. If you wish to make a public comment, you are invited to call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562 if you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Please wait for the chair's instructions and then press * 9. Your microphone will be unmuted, and you'll be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You can also email your public comment to Denise.Moran@SAU19.org prior to 3 o'clock of the meeting date. Please indicate public comment. Today's date, Goffstown School Board meeting in the subject line, and include your name and address, and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting. However, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. The board meeting can be viewed on GTV16 On Demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. So if everybody could stand and say the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in the common good of the people, the people, and the justice of all.
All right, thank you. So just to let everybody know, at home, we switched the agenda a little bit. Dr. Dolloff is going to talk about the special ed local plan after our committee report, so that way she doesn't have to sit through a long meeting. So we have correspondence.
Just a few things that we shared with the board this evening, including some correspondence from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, which included a legislative update for this week. There continues to be an awful lot transpiring with respect to Senate and House Education Committees, along with the Omnibus Bill and everything else that goes along with all of them, so we shared that with you. And from the neighborhood news, Mrs. Moran shared a great little article about our Goffstown team advancing to the Destination Imagination Global Finals. So we'd like to offer our congratulations to those students and wish them well in the challenges ahead of them. This is a great example of a program that, again, people who are our coaches, these are not stipendated positions, these are people that are volunteering their time. And I taught and coached this program many, many, many years ago, and it is incredibly rewarding. It's really fun. It's very different than anything else you can really do. So the kids that are into this, it's just a wonderful opportunity, and we'd like to thank them. And Lissa Winrow is our regional coordinator, so Lissa has given so much of her time to this program, as well as all the coaches. And that's it for today.
Awesome, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, commendations, good news. Caleb?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, move on to public comments. Scott, is there anybody on the phone?
Uh, Jeff? Uh, no.
All right, and Denise, you didn't receive any emails? All right, moving on. Did everybody look at the minutes from the last meeting? Anybody see anything?
I'll move approval. It'll be April 19th minutes.
Okay. All right, Ellen, is there a second? Second by Ginny. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, since we don't have anybody on the call, I can say everybody in favor, yea or nay, right?
Yep.
Okay. So everyone...
Feels weird, but yes, you can do that.
There are words. All those, what is it again? All those in favor?
Favor?
If you had a motion, you had a second, right?
Yes, so all those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Motion has passed. All right, so committee report. Scott?
Sure, tonight you have a manifest in front of you. Let me grab it. And it's in the amount of $1,838,554.86, of which your payroll, taxes, and benefits are $1,385,000 and change. Your special ed activity is a little over $100,000. And again, noting that some of these are out-of-district placements, we have hired a lot of consultants as well, so be mindful of that. In terms of your general expenses, Goffstown Truck Center is the largest one for your regular education for April. You'll see another bill for invoice from WV Mason for the desk, however that was grant-funded. And another one that's kind of noteworthy is New Hampshire Fisher Cats. That one is $15,000. That includes both the Goffstown High School graduation and the Mountain View promotions. We're doing that the same day. Mountain View is in the afternoon, and then the high school is in the evening. And one that's a little unusual also is Goffstown Babe Ruth Baseball. You've seen this in your budget, but we do have a $5,000 fee that goes towards improvements down there, so that takes care of their maintenance, and they do like split seating, fertilization, or general types of repairs, so it goes into field improvements. And last but not least, food service. We often don't see expenses exceeding $5,000, especially this year, but this time we did, and that's a little over $15,000. So I'm not sure if there are any questions on the manifest, but I'm here to respond. You do?
Go ahead, Ellen.
Just real quick, I know I asked you this before. Up in special ed, I'm noticing we're not, we're not recording how many students each of the tuition things is, and I understand if it's one child. At some point, because I've been kind of trying to track the costs per child kind of thing, is there a point at which we can get that kind of information as a board?
Brian?
I'm not following you.
I don't, you want to know how...
The best way to track it would be to look at budget expenditures by the 1,200 function code. So if, for example, all the spending for special education would be within that one function code?
Yeah.
So that would be the best way to track expenditures based on the budgeting. In terms of how many students a particular, these are vendor services that you're looking at here, Ellen, so...
But some of these are tuition out, out of district.
Some of them are.
Yes.
And other of these are, you know, so for example, Boothby Therapy and Suresk are both speech, so are they...
Yeah, I understand.
You know, each one of those speech people are probably working with 50 or more students. You know, so we haven't included how many students per, if that's something that the board wanted, it would be more work.
Well, let me tell you why I was thinking of that, go down the road. I'm thinking of, as we're looking at facility usage and facility needs, if there's any way a specific kind of program is needed, could we bring it here? I know we've got a lot more kids staying in district than going out than we did years ago. I understand that. But if there's a program that appears to be in higher demand year after year, especially that we could bring it back in here with our facilities considerations?
So if we had a program that we were recommending, creating some kind of a, almost like a self-contained type of program? We would do that through the budget process. So for example, in the majority of our buildings, we have programs for students with social, emotional, and behavioral disorders. We have programs for students that are, that need more supports neurologically.
Yes.
So we have those two types of programs, and from, and I'm going to use terms that I wouldn't otherwise normally use, but Ellen, as I think everyone knows, is a retired special ed teacher. So from a program approval perspective, those are approved for self-contained or, you know, a general ed type of setting.
Right.
So we've done program approval for all of those programs.
That kind of thing.
So at this point, I don't think that we have a need that we haven't budgeted and planned for, but certainly programmatically, if Jen came to me with a recommendation that, let's say we had six students that we were sending out of district that had vision impairments. This is a hypothetical, and it would never get to six, because it would probably only take two students where I would say it would be more cost-effective for us to do that in-house. And arguably, I think we do a better job than the majority of the out-of-district placements or private providers, and you save a lot of money on transportation, and the ideological commitment to keeping kids in their local neighborhood schools, you can't put a price tag on.
Right.
So I don't think, I would say we could do what you're asking. It probably wouldn't get you where you're looking to be.
Okay.
Brian, if I could... Brian, Dr. Dolloff?
Just to give you a sense of what we have, we've got about 22 students in Goffstown that are out of district, but only nine of those are placed by the district, and one of those is a move-in that came, and the student was already in placement. So we have court order placements, we have charter school tuition, so, and I can give you a range, certainly.
Now, I'm just thinking about, as we're looking at the use of our facilities.
Yeah, that's great.
And what always comes into my mind are the varying, the spectrum, the autism spectrum, and if there's something we can do to bring kids, I'm glad our administration is always looking at it, but as we are considering use of our facilities or any need for expansion someplace, I don't know, I'm not making any...
I would just share that space to provide the type of programming that students need is a massive challenge for us.
Yes.
At the elementary level.
Yeah.
So we don't, we struggle with space, as I think the board knows all too well, unfortunately. So our elementary children, and I would say kindergarten as well, we have spaces at a premium, and there's no question that that space should be a consideration. Perhaps that's something that the facilities planning committee at some point in time might like to ask Jen or her team to come and speak a little more about it.
Just be aware, I will be asking that as a consideration of what we're looking at.
Yeah, and I would just share that that is absolutely 100% always a consideration for me. So as a former special ed teacher and a special ed director, I will always look at the special education needs, in particular with program development, with being able to provide services more effectively by not sending kids out of district. We, you know, Jen shared the numbers. We have less than 10 kids that we've placed out of district. Is Janelle on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Janelle.
Hi, I'm here. I got on at about 7:06.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. So I would just say, in general, it's something that's always on our radar.
Okay. And the other thing in my mind was addressing early childhood trauma.
Yes.
And, you know, and I, we haven't heard as a board about those kinds of things, but I just want to put it on the table. I was trying to track the number of kids and the cost that was, was, plus the transportation, because it's transportation both ways to places in Massachusetts. This is hugely expensive.
Yeah.
So I just put it on the table, and it won't take up any more time, but I'll be asking about that.
Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else have any questions for Scott? All right, so I need a motion to approve the manifest.
So moved?
By Ellen. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
By Jared. Any other discussion? All right, we'll do roll call. Reta?
Yes.
Ginny? Yes. Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Scott, do you have anything else?
That'll do it.
All right, thank you. All right, Budget Committee, Jared?
Budget Committee, we met last month and elected our chair and vice chair at the Budget Committee. Relatively smooth meeting. They did ask Scott, who attended, two specific questions on two of our line items that have been overspent, but as we all know as a board, it was due to COVID for the significant overspend. One of them was, of course, technology, from what we had budgeted, but went well, and our next meeting is documented on, for May 20th at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jared. PNC, Reta?
Yes. PNC met this evening. We had several items on, on our agenda. The first was the scholarship, which we'll be talking about later this evening in non-public. We also talked about teacher, teacher and staff appreciation day, so this is the first day of appreciation, it's not appreciation day, it's appreciation week. So as you know, in the past, we have had, we have had puffets, which were always well-received, and that's just not possible right now with everything going on. So we had looked at some other things, and just logistically, to be able to make this happen with all the other stuff that's going on is going to be very challenging, but we will, you'll notice that on the, on the social media sites, they've, they've got some, an announcement posted, and also, we're encouraging, you know, on behalf of the whole board, I would like to just share our appreciation for everything that everybody has done to make this happen. Just school over the past year has been a monumental task, and I think everybody rose to that occasion, and it seems like every day brought new challenges, and we all know it wasn't easy. So for those at home, certainly if you want to reach out to any of, any of your teachers or the staff to share what they may have done to make, make it go smoothly, I'm sure that would be a welcome appreciation. So we'll be reaching out as well with a letter of recognition for all that they've done.
Go ahead, Ginny.
I don't know whether this is appropriate or not, but this thought just came into my head, which is scary sometimes, but I was wondering if the school board could, because this was just such an odd year, and it was so stressful for everybody, and, and our teachers, school personnel altogether worked so hard and over and above anything that they've ever had to do before, and did it well and cheerfully. Would it be appropriate for the school board to write a letter of appreciation and put that letter in everybody's portfolio? Would that be something appropriate, that would be something that would go along with the teacher's ongoing? That would come from like the school board, thank you for, you know, your participation this year, and going over and beyond, and, and caring for our students. We appreciate...
So we will be sending a letter out to everybody, but when you say portfolio...
Well, just put it in their school record that is kept in, like, that goes on with them forever.
We could do that. We probably normally wouldn't.
Yeah.
But we certainly would have the ability to do that. I think, Reta, maybe you didn't share about the letter.
Right.
Yeah.
So Reta's thought was, they were going to work on, on behalf of Heather and Reta as the subcommittee chair, they were going to work on a letter to send out to all staff, so I think that's in the works.
Yeah. But I think a letter that's in their portfolio, that goes with them, means a lot more than just a letter saying thanks, you know, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to do whatever the board would like, so we could put it in people's personnel files, we can just, you know, put it in their mailboxes, we can email it, we can do, you know, whatever the board would like.
Just a thought I had that would be something over and above.
Does that, how are you planning on distributing the letter?
Most likely electronically.
Okay, so we email to everybody?
Right. So I just, I'm, I'm not sure what's involved with having it put in the portfolio and...
Yeah.
Who has authority to do that? You know, I, certainly a certificate, as I was mentioning, that, you know, when they think back 10 years from now, what they, what they did, you know, that's, it, it is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime, and maybe 10-lifetime.
Let's hope so.
Hopefully.
Let's hope so.
So, so that, you know, we, we do, really do appreciate all that has happened. I don't know how we would have gotten through this past year without the staff and faculty that made it happen. The other thing that we talked about is the retreat, and just a reminder that we do have the retreat scheduled for June 21st. It will be at St. Anselm, and I don't think we have the exact location, but that will be coming soon. And that will start at 3 o'clock with our board meeting, and will be followed by a presentation by, hold on one second, by Will Phillips of the New Hampshire School Board Association, and that will be focused on digital media. And then we will, we'll break for dinner, and then we will come back and just, you know, have some time to reflect on this past year and looking towards the future and, meaning the next year, and what our goals are either at the subcommittee or board level. So, so that's in the works, and just make sure that's on your calendar. And that was it. We are not planning to meet next month unless there's a need, so our, our next meeting will be at the, at the retreat.
Thank you, Reta. All right, the next is Facilities Planning Committee. Who speaks on that? Ellen, go ahead. I don't know who's talking.
I didn't know there was a date set, so...
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Scott, maybe Scott could probably fill it in.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we basically, we were looking at two different dates, and then I sent out...
That's right.
I sent out an email to people on that committee, what would work. So that's the date that we kind of established for the, you know, and that was the date that the majority of hopes on the Facilities Planning Committee could meet, so that's the date that we selected, basically, so that's, there really isn't more to it than that.
And 6 o'clock here.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's May 25th?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Policy Review Committee will be meeting on Monday, May 10th at 5:30, and we are doing it in person at the SAU building. It'll be upstairs. So that's 5:30 to 7:00. And CNE, Ginny?
We are meeting on the, on May 10th as well at 7:00, and that will be at the SAU, and it will be an in-person meeting as well. May I also speak on our stipend committee meeting?
Sure.
We did meet just before vacation. We reviewed what we went over last year to get ourselves back into gear, pretty much, and we looked over our, our information that we had, and we are having another informa, another meeting this week. So we'll have more information for you after that, after we...
On the next board meeting?
Looked at all of our stuff and get back into, into gear on our committee.
Okay. Thank you, Ginny.
You're welcome.
All right, the next is Joint Area Committee Meeting. That's the subcommittee. We are meeting next Tuesday, May 11th at 6:00, and that's also in person at the SAU on the second floor.
Heather, I should share, I did see some correspondence that New Boston was questioning whether they would be ready for that date or not, so if there's anything, that was pretty recent this afternoon, so we might have some more information in another day or two, but I, I think New Boston's concerned about how soon that date is coming up.
Okay, so if we need to change it?
Yeah, and really, what we were trying to accomplish was, the, the larger full SAU Joint Area Meeting is scheduled for...
June 1st.
June 1st, and that meeting is required to be in the month of June.
Right.
And we have scheduled the SAU attorney to be there to talk about process, to talk about putting, you know, the options of putting either an extension on the warrant in front of the voters two years prior to the expiration in 2024, or putting on the creation of a Joint Area Subcommittee, so Attorney Egert will be there to answer any questions of the, of both boards together.
Okay.
So we've got him scheduled for that.
All right, so the joint, full boards, June 1st at 6:00, and that's remote, so it's on Zoom. Yes, Jared, go ahead.
Just want to verbally acknowledge that this day is the day after Memorial Day weekend, so there may be a large number of people that are on vacation.
Which, June 1st?
Right.
I don't think we've heard from anybody that that was a conflict. Again, we're, you know, we're happy to do whatever the board would like if that date is problematic. The month of May has, has very quickly filled up for us.
It has.
And in particular, we've added a few new committees, including the Facilities Planning Committee, back in the mix. Ginny mentioned the stipend subcommittee. We've got our Learning Management System Review Committee, the Joint Area, you know, so we're, we're happy to do whatever. If there's another day that works, we, we're open to that.
I just want to acknowledge that.
Okay.
You know, that's the day after Memorial Day. If people are taking vacation, that might...
Right. They just have to let us know if they can't make it. I know that date got emailed out, I saw, to ask.
Yeah, and, and we put that date out there for the last couple of weeks, but, you know, again, if, if it's an issue, let us know. We're happy to look at, you know, the, getting into the, the last week of school is always hard for people.
Right.
So it, yeah, just the month is getting chewed up fast. But we're, we're open to whatever the board would like.
Yes. I had a question. I just might be confused. When is our board having a discussion?
May 17th in non-public. That's not on here.
May 17th.
That's the next school board meeting. Is that, you're asking for us?
Our discussion, okay, that's after the subcommittee's meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, hopefully.
Oh, there it is, okay.
We'll see.
You'll let us know if that subcommittee meeting is moved?
We will.
Yes.
We will.
Thank you.
So right now, keep it as the 11th until you hear otherwise.
Okay.
And then, all right, and that's in person, and then the Joint Area is Zoom. A lot of meetings coming up.
Yep.
And then the last one is the Learning Management System.
Yeah, just very, very briefly, the, I think the board is aware of what we're looking at here. This includes looking at a full, comprehensive learning management software platform moving forward. The board's aware that we've been using Seesaw for our younger children and Google Classroom for everyone else. Neither one of those two platforms are really a comprehensive learning management system like a Canvas or Blackboard. Those might be products that you're familiar with. So this meeting will be to review five different options to consider moving forward, to look at a more comprehensive learning management software platform, and it was critically important to me that we had those conversations with teachers. So we opened up that process to any teachers that have wanted to be a part of it, and we took in everybody that put their name in. So it's, we were happy to have kind of a bigger tent and to welcome people in, and we're, the short, short, short version is we're looking at a free platform called ILearn, which the state is funding for five years, with this year being the first of the five years, and that's looking at Canvas as the learning management software platform. It includes a free license for Zoom, which for us was about $65,000 just for Goffstown, and a program called CalTura, which is, think about an approved YouTube for educator. That's kind of an easy way to explain what CalTura is, so that's one option. The section option, second option is to stay exactly where we are, using Google Classroom and Seesaw. The third option would be to look at other learning management software platforms like Schoology, which is the proprietary platform that's used by Power School, which is our student information system. And the last option is to look at Moodle, which is an open-source learning management software system, but that's, that's what the work of that committee will be. I believe Mr. Cludier, who's not on the call this evening, but I think he may be watching the meeting, I think he had indicated that if his schedule allowed, that he would do his best as our technology representative to be a part of that, so I believe those dates have been shared with Dan, and we also offered it to the New Boston Board as well.
All right, awesome. All right, any questions on standing committees before we move on to superintendent report? Go ahead, Ellen.
Just one, is there something lacking in what we currently have that we're looking at something new or to change over, or think maybe there's something...
Better.
Better suited for our needs?
Yeah, and, and really, the, again, the, the short, the committee hasn't started yet, but the idea was that we have this free option in front of us that a lot of school districts have chosen to go forward with, or have chosen not to go forward with for a number of reasons, but some of these platforms, and I think I didn't say the Google Suite, so that was, I'm sorry if I, I may have omitted one. The last one would be to look at the Google Suite with all of the so-called add-ons. These come with a significant cost. These come with significant investments in professional development and training for staff, but what we have right now, Google Classroom, is not the same as a comprehensive learning management software. So Jared asked a question a couple of months ago about teachers entering grades. There are times that teachers have to double-enter grades because you can't enter grades into Google Classroom that export into Power School, but if we used Canvas or Schoology or one of these other platforms, they do. So right now, for any elementary student to log on to any of our curriculum assets, so whether it's our Wonders program or any of the McGraw-Hill products, any of the online resources, kids have to go through about nine steps to get there.
That's right.
If you have a platform like a Schoology or a Moodle, you can do it with one click. So there, I think that there are a lot of efficiencies that we could incorporate. There are other tools that integrate seamlessly, like something called TurnItIn, which is plagiarism, anti-plagiarism software. So I think right now, I think, and by the way, I don't want to change anything mid-stream, so the last thing I wanted to even talk about was changing from what we're doing now, because that was a massive shift for people. But long-term, looking forward, it makes sense to take a hard look and say which one of these pathways makes the most sense, understanding that there are costs and investments associated with all of them. But I will say, I feel very strongly, and the pandemic has really solidified this, but I have long been a proponent of requiring an online class. This is something that Scott and I had talked about years before the pandemic as well, to require kids to learn how to be online learners. Well, I think check, I think we've got that now. But before that, that was, that was something I was actually interested in thinking about incorporating into the graduation requirements, because I want these kids to learn how to be online learners, because so much of higher ed has gone that direction. So, you know, I, I think that there's a lot to think about. The iLearn platform is being used by all of the K to 12 plus universities. So it's all of the college, the university system in New Hampshire have all migrated to Canvas. So it makes sense for us to take a really good, long, hard look at it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Brian. All right, so moving on to Superintendent Report.
Okay, just a few quick things this evening. I had shared with you at your last meeting that we are looking to hold a spring concert. I think Mrs. McCann is still working on the date because I screwed her up with our student vaccine clinic. And she's trying to avoid students who might be, you know, having a response to their COVID shot. But we're working on that. Our kindergarten enrollment is something that we're watching very closely. Mrs. Stoyle reports this afternoon that she's up to 144, which is the highest number it's ever been. So it's a good thing we added 6,200 square feet over at that place, because right now we are jam-packed. Our classes right now, based on that 144 number, would be about 18 per class. So we're watching that very, very closely and evaluating whether we need to consider an additional section. I had shared with you that I've had a number of inquiries from foreign, foreign exchange students. Those have continued. So I think that is something that the board will need to contend with, certainly in the June timeframe. Looking at advancing student learning supports for all, this is something that's kind of a universal remediation for anyone who wants it. We're doing some planning for next year and we'll have some proposals at upcoming meetings associated with that. We already spoke about the Learning Management System Meeting. Since our last meeting, we had our student vaccine clinic on, feels like a long time ago, but it was the week before. Last week, it was the week before vacation. We had a really great response. I think we had over about 430 students get their vaccines with us. And we were so grateful, again, as always, to our great nursing staff, our wonderful relationship with the Goffstown Fire Department, as well as the Manchester Public Health Department. So that will have our second shot for those kids in two more weeks. So they'll be fully vaccinated and two weeks clear for Memorial Day weekend. So for those kids and those families, I think a really good step in the right direction. And lastly, I had shared with you that Mrs. Kohler at Mountain View had created a number of transition videos. I hadn't had the chance to watch them all, but she did a terrific job. And I've had the chance to see those now. Really did a nice job thinking about all the transitions coming in and out of Mountain View. You've got 5th graders entering, you've got 7th graders entering, you've got 8th graders leaving. So they really have worked hard to demystify that process as much as they can for families, knowing that in-person, you know, large kind of scale, like bring all this, you know, New Boston kids in for the, like, we can't do any of those kinds of things right now. But she's done a really nice job. So it was nice to have a little time off. So I know that we're all glad to, to be back. And we've got six weeks left and my, my mantra will continue to be to finish strong. That a lot of school districts are saying how tired and exhausted they are. I'm not feeling that way. I think we're going to finish the year strong. We want to be nothing but positive and optimistic and have a great end of the school year with all of the rituals and celebrations and the great things that go along with it. So that's all I have and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick, I know you've mentioned foreign exchange students a few times and I know that's something we have to discuss in one of our June meetings. So I don't, if there's any, I don't know what the laws are or the restrictions on traveling. I guess we would need to have some of that.
Yeah, it, it might make sense for us to consider maybe our first meeting in June to have it as an agenda item.
Yes.
And so maybe we could tentatively put that on. Thank you, Mrs. Moran.
Anybody would want to know?
It's a policy consideration. So you, you allow foreign exchange students by school board policy. There's no restriction right now, apart from probably India, that there are restrictions from any individual countries. Again, I think the question would remain whether someone from, you know, a place that has low COVID numbers would want to come to the United States. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. The fall probably looks different. But I think the big consideration is, you know, if and when there was any kind of a remote kind of environment, how are you going to respond to that? In all likelihood, you know, I, I've, I've worked hard not to speculate too much of what I think the fall will look like, but I think the fall will look very much like normal. So it's probably time in June and we'd be happy to do a little bit of homework. But I do have, I probably have four or five in the queue right now anyhow. I just want you guys to be aware and I want the citizens that might be watching to know that we have your name, we, you know, we're, we're on it. And the board will have further discussions and make some decisions. I had inquired about this last year and no school districts had even been considering it. So I think that we might be a little early on this one still. But I'll reach out to some other superintendent colleagues and see what other districts are thinking.
So we figure the first meeting is June?
Yeah, I think so. I think we'd be ready for that.
All right, perfect. All right, so now we're going to jump to Dr. Dola to go through the special education local plan approval.
Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. So essentially, the state and federal, federal and state law requires that every district have a plan in place for special education sort of demonstrating the commitment to access. It also provides the superintendent with, you know, evidence that we're adhering to all of the laws and IDA and state, state rules. So there were, there was sort of a cascading effect when ESEA was reauthorized into ESSA. It, that, that then had an impact on IDA several years later, which eventually came to New Hampshire and impacted our state rules, which they've now changed to, to standards. So now we have state standards in special education. So with all that said, so a lot has changed as it was last updated. So this is simply just an update. There's, as I said for the last group I met with, there are substantial changes to those of us in special education when you're dealing with all the specificity of this law. But I can go through a few of them and sort of give you a flavor for what they are and, and go from there. So essentially, the evaluation process was, used to be 45 days. Now in New Hampshire, we're permitted to go 60 days. We used to get a 15-day extension. We could potentially get a 30-day extension if needed after the first time a child's evaluated. It expanded the pool of individuals that can do a health evaluation. We can now use a school nurse for that purpose. It requires that we get parents a copy of the evaluative reports in the IEP five days before meeting, rather than sort of springing it on parents when they arrive. And, you know, when there's a corrective action from the DOE, we have a 20-day period with which to respond. And then the commissioner has a certain amount of time to, to respond to our appeal, that sort of thing. So those, those are changes throughout. If you look through the document, it's pretty dry. You know, we haven't had, I don't want to knock on wood, haven't had a lot of complaints or controversial issues. So we've been fortunate. I think that the special ed staff do a tremendous job trying to meet the needs of all students and adhering to, you know, compliance issues and making sure that students are getting what they need. So that's really the gist of this. It's, there's a lot of change. The DOE sent out a request that we change this at one point and provided a somewhat of a template. So this is sort of going to be similar to what's in the other districts. And it's essentially just a reiteration of IDA law and state, and state standards now. So if anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Shane.
I have one that's slightly related. I think it's related anyway. Is there any focus monitoring coming up for our district? Is that, any of that on the horizon?
So we just received notice, the sped directors, that the DOE is rehauling all of the monitoring process. They're feeling, they used to do, every three to five years, they'd reevaluate districts. Then they shifted to only evaluating districts that had great need. Now they feel like they're not hitting enough districts, so they're going to introduce a whole new evaluative process. That's going to hit every district essentially, but I think there's going to be less face-to-face. Have you been through a couple of them?
Oh, yeah. Yep, I sure have. In the year 13.
Yes. We do very well with that.
Anyone else have questions for Dr. Dola?
And if you have questions in the future, feel free to email me. But thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Dola.
Yeah, we need to, just to be clear, we do need to vote to approve it.
Right. We did this at the SAU.
Yep.
So if anybody doesn't have any more questions or discussion, we'll need a motion to approve what was presented. Go ahead, Shane.
A motion to approve to, to approve as presented.
Great. Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Right, Ellen. Any other discussion? See you in none. Janelle, did you have a, just anything aside?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. We're unanimous. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, Jen. Please go home.
All right, so now we're going to go back to old business and updates with CIP and mini CIP matrix for approval. We have a new updated one that was given to us.
New and improved, so I will hand it off to Mr. Gross.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to just focus on the line numbers for, for changes that were made. Number 19, this is new Maple Avenue playground equipment.
Thank you, Ben.
The superintendent, the facilities director and myself went to Maple Avenue a week before school vacation to take a look at one of their pieces of playground equipment. And it's one, I think it's, Brian, is it pretty much their oldest piece, I think?
And it's the one that they've had some injuries as a result of.
So this is one where there may be like a fix to it, but there may not be a fix to it. So we're going to look to get a, an inspection done of this. But I, I think we'd like to keep this on the front burner, shall we say. This would be a capital reserve fund type of item. And as we learn more in the, in the weeks ahead, this one, we might come back to you. Because it's some, it's, it's one of like the major pieces of playground equipment in that, in that, in that facility. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we, this board approved that heating controls project using capital reserve fund monies. And I mentioned that the, the engineer who we're working with on developing that RFP had said, hey, this may not be the time to do a project like this based upon the contract, construction costs. Also note that heating controls are also part of, that you could use for grants. So I think we need to be nimble and a little flexible, that if we get a bad report on this playground, we might want to swap things in and out. So just, to just be mindful of that it is their biggest piece of equipment. And we have had, what, two or three instances of injury from it.
This isn't by any chance part of the old Titanic, is it?
No, that's gone.
No.
That's completely gone. This is subsequent, okay.
So more to follow, you know, on that one. The other one that we made, that I made some changes on, if you look at page four, line 45 and 46, this theater expansion slash theater infrastructure, I moved that out based upon feedback from the board in terms of trying to level out the CIP in the out years. So when you look, now it's a little bit more evenly distributed than it was in the first go-around of it. So it's the same amounts of money, but I just moved it out to FY '23 as opposed to FY '22. Not to mention the fact that if we did embark upon a project like that, doing this big windows project and doing that might be a little bit too ambitious.
Oh, sorry, Jared. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. For line 46, Scott, I know it's currently marked as CRF, but I see in the comments that it's eligible for ESSR grants?
That's, it's, it's possible, yes. So we have to, as I, I think I mentioned to the board that everything that we would ever use ESSR grants for, I have to get pre-approval from the Department of Education. So really, that's the precursor to all of this, is that the board would then decide, what do you want to use? I then would have, it's like two or three-page write-up that I send to the Department of Ed and then they'll bless it as an ESSR-type grant opportunity, or they'll say no. So.
I think anything that could be ESSR-related, we definitely just get an early start and submit as, if we can, just to ensure that it's.
This one particular project, and again, Scott didn't necessarily list every possible funding source, but this would also be one for consideration, looking at impact fees.
The expansion, yes. The infrastructure, the, the existing, replacing furniture, the chairs, that would not be impact fees. But a storage, like an expansion, that would be impact fee-related. So that's another, that's another one that's, that's there. So it's grant, impact fees is a lot that you could use. Any other questions on 45 or 46?
Jenny doesn't have her hand up. Okay, go ahead.
Then lastly, and I think this might have been a conversation I had with Jared, on line number 71, and I should have put it in bold, this was also new, LED lighting retrofit, energy incentive grant. So if you recall, we used, don't quote me, I think $16,000 of CRF monies to do a lighting retrofit in all of the gyms and/or cafes throughout the district. And that was a great opportunity. There are more lighting, energy rebates and incentives available. So I, I think, I think it was right, Jared, we spoke that it would be prudent to put money in. We don't know what school it would be, but it should be somewhere in the district where if there are opportunities for us to have like one of these two to four-year, you know, return your investment things and you get better lighting and have reduced energy costs, that would be wise. So I added that in as well. So you'll see at the end, it's a little bit more balanced. Obviously, 2024 is the biggie. Is, is that more that big year because it has to do with the, a turf and/or lights, et cetera, here at the high schools? That's kind of the big one driving that particular year. But I tried to kind of, you know, even that out a little bit. So the ones that I think we have to keep an eye on are notably the, the Maple play, playset. That's something that we, you know, I think we should update you in the next, hopefully by June, definitely. And then the other one is the scoreboard. So we were able to kind of, they replaced a ton of things at the softball field, that scoreboard. That one is not as mission critical, because it's not a timed activity. You can keep score. But the other one, as I mentioned, that's one that, where, whether it be football or others, you have a timed activity. And that scoreboard is seen, it's, it's at its useful life as it is. That's another one that I'm getting, I'm getting quotes on that. But it's probably going to be, for that one, about a $25,000 to $30,000 CRF cost. So that would be one that the board should make a decision on by next month, because this way it'll be able to be ordered and installed before the next season. The softball one, I think is going to, if that one dies on us, it's not as, it's not as bad. You can keep score, you know, of a baseball game. It's not as bad. But the, the other ones, you're talking about this like six or seven sports that are played on, a lot of them are timed. And that would be a big problem for us. So that's really the, the bulk of, of what we've got going. And there's more to follow on those, on those two items.
So Scott, with the playground, will you have more information cost? Are you thinking definitely?
We, we know we have a cost. So we, I, I have a cost. The, the issue is, is there a way to, is it, is there, is there another way of dealing with it? Because we think that there might be, but we're just not quite sure. And that's where like prime X owners get involved and they inspect this stuff for us. So.
And Scott, we should clarify, that playground is inspected every year.
Yeah. It is inspected every.
This is not a playground that hasn't been inspected. It's been inspected every year. But this year, Mrs. Pischka had some concerns that I don't remember hearing previously.
Right.
That had to do with the height of the equipment and we had some kids fall. So we just want to make sure it's safe for everybody. And these pieces of equipment are very expensive.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
Yeah, you, you'd get sticker shock pretty fast if you've never gone out and priced out a piece of playground equipment. It's, it's outrageous.
I don't, I just, I don't like to like surprise you, like, like, oh my God, we have this big project. And like, so I, I'm, as we know, we share it with you, and.
And Scott, I think this is one that we, we just got involved, I think it was the week before vacation.
The week before, right.
So I mean, we, we haven't been on this one for very long.
Yep. I just wanted you to know about that.
So you'll update us?
Yeah.
Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm just looking at the tax appropriation items. What's our strategy we're going to use to communicate that? Is this going to be in our regular budgeting process? Or are we going to be looking for individual warrant articles for the items that we have listed as tax appropriated?
I think that's going to be a really important decision and discussion for the board during the budget process. So one thing that we've not been great about, Jared, I think as you know, is we've had a pretty aggressive CIP process now. I, I would say my first year as superintendent, this was like a page. And so we have put a lot of work into this over the years. We've been much more strategic about our thinking, but we haven't been good about paying for things. So I think we've done better with that. Certainly, the capital reserve fund as a tool has been a powerful tool. But as you know, we haven't put separate warrant articles, we haven't built in, you know, big ticket items into the budget. And I think that those would all be important discussions for the board to have.
The reason, the reason why I just bring it up is because I imagine that this, this piece of paper that we have is going to be one of the first things that we're actually presenting to the facilities planning committee to look at the long-term impact or short-term impacts of our schools. And I know that some members of those boards, they're going to ask that question.
Sure.
You know, if it's tax appropriated, are we going to put it as a budget line item? Or is it something that we're going to look outside the budget as an individual warrant article? I think October might be too late, or September might be too late to make that type of decision.
I actually think, I don't want to speak for Retta, but we were talking about something like this as part of the retreat agenda. So I, I think in terms of budget, budget visioning, thinking about the methodology of paying for some of these things, I know Ellen had mentioned about creating maybe a new capital reserve fund. So we, we have tentatively put those on the retreat agenda.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
I, I think you make an excellent point. And would it, would it be better for the board to go in the direction of changing some of these tax appropriations to CRF? Because you look at roofs for, roof for an example, or the ones that have, the odds of us, I mean, yes, we could put a warrant article out there for X amount of dollars to replace, you know, roofs on three or four schools. Is that really the way to go? Or, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you have your bond at the high school. So this current, this next fiscal year, that's up, okay? And the net between what you lost in building aid and what you had to pay in principal and interest is around three hundred thousand dollars. You also don't have any more lease payments on your portable, one hundred and twenty-five. So you're, but you have about, let's say, four to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that you could, you could bump your number up to deposit into the capital reserve fund. You could go four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. And then all of your funding is coming from your, you know, kind of your CRF. So if you got into that habit and you put half a million dollars in over the next six years, well, that's, that's three, that's three million dollars. And you're going to be able to tackle a lot of those. You have a ten million dollar CIP, but that goes a long way. And if the citizens, the voters see that, you know, you're earmarking these things for boiler replacement, for roof, roofs, et cetera, then that might be a wise move. I, I don't know, but it's not, that's not my decision, that's yours.
Yeah.
I, I could change these if you want.
Some of those, we have to be careful though. So for example, a warrant article for a roof might be a good idea. I think everybody understands roofs have a, a lifespan, they don't last forever. But if the voters vote down a project, no means no.
No.
So we just have to be mindful that if, if we put on a Maple Ave roof replacement and the voters say no to that, and then we need to do that project in an emergency, we've got a legal, we've got a legal problem. So we just always have to be careful and be mindful about the implications for putting things specifically on the warrant.
Yeah. Do you want me to change some of these to CRF?
I, I think that this would be a discussion that we'll have at our retreat, and that's why I'm going to kind of hold my comments until that point.
The, the big question is that that might be something that when Ellen goes before the CIP committee, she might have to say, you know, the board is considering changing some of these from tax appropriation to CRF. But that might be a good route to go?
Ellen had her hand up. Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, this is sort of one of my, the things with the CRF. I would just, the thought I had had raised before was using these funds that we're no longer going to need for the bond and the rent, rental. We have a CRF that is for replacement of capital items. Do we need a, a different type for new items?
We certainly would.
That's, and that's where, so, I mean, either way, I think, I think we'd be, I'm thinking right now, can be talked out of it, I guess, with discussion, but I think we would be very wise to look and ask the public for the use of these funds. Maybe not all of them. So some of it is permanently goes back to, you know, reducing the tax burden. But to be able to have that so that we can maintain our schools, improve our schools, which would be two different funds, would be very wise of us to do. And I hope it comes up, Jared can bring these kind of topics to our budget committee to get feedback on this type of planning. There is a very good reason, and the superintendent mentioned it, why we have never, as a board, since CIP came around, divvied up into special articles. And that's the primary one. A no is a no.
Right.
You don't get to do it. This is a tool available to the public, it goes through the process. And I, I guess I'd be interested in listening to everybody's ideas about warrant articles. But I've also seen districts that put absolutely everything in a warrant article, okay? And that's just, I think, asking for nothing but trouble. Especially if you're into difficult situations or political situations in your community. I would just ask that we be very mindful of ramifications. And I, I need to look more closely at what we're proposing to use, what funds we're using, where and when. I have to look much closer at it as individual items, line items, to see if we can max, how we can maximize it. And how much money we have. Two hundred thousand dollars a year goes away really quick.
Yeah.
Really quick. So anyway, thank you.
So you need us to move this tonight?
Yeah, to move it, to allow me to send this to the, to the town's planning department, so that this way they have all the documents.
A move that we approve, if I may?
Yeah, it's both the CIP and the Mini CIP.
No, they don't deal with the Mini.
Oh, just the CIP.
That's, that's for your benefit. But that was Ellen's, which is a great idea. But it just, that's really good for us in terms of facilities.
Okay. All right, so if anybody else, questions, comments?
The only thing, thought I have is looking at the Mini, I'm not seeing us using any funding, a, a grant or any other funding. We're putting all the grant monies and CRF toward the big ticket items. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, some of these items in the Mini are, many times are addressed in our budget.
Yep. Yep.
So it's really the bigger ones that, you know.
Yep.
We need that.
To help reduce that, okay. I'd like to move that we approve the presented capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven. Received today, excuse me, I want to say not received today, but it's dated April twenty. Why is it dated April twenty-third?
Because it was updated on April twenty-third.
That's when I updated it, before vacation.
Gotcha. Dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jared. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have the life LTV renewal. The last meeting, we had questioned whether it was multiple years. Apparently it is a two-year.
Yeah, so.
So we'll need a new motion approving the two years. And you have information on it right in front of you.
And I apologize, I think I may have misspoke and said that it was a one-year proposal, it was a two-year proposal. So Mrs. McGrath did clarify that.
Right.
Make that motion as presented.
All right, by Jared. Do I have a second? By, oh Ginny, did you have a question or a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other further discussion? Seeing none. I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Motion passed. So the new business, now we have the GTV lease renewal, which is also in your packet, Scott.
Sure, thank you. This lease is set to expire in a, in a couple of months. The prior lease agreement was also a five-year agreement between the town and the school. We have a handful of these. So for those in the public that might, might not know, the, the building where the SAU is located is a town-owned building, and it's a hundred-year lease with the school district. We have memorandum of understandings with the police department, we have an SRO-type agreement. So we've got, we've got a great partnership with, with the town of Goffstown. And the GTV, GTV studio space is one of those ones where GTV uses it on the off-hours when school is, is not in session. If you, the lease, nothing has changed at all substantively with that, except for the dates, five more years. But I mean, you look through that lease, it does spell out some things. And one of the, one of the items that I spoke to the town administrator about was the posting of hours. There's supposed to be a sign on the out, on both the interior and exterior doors, it says the hours of GTV. So people know, just little, little things like that. There's also a little bit of clarification there. If you look in that agreement, they have to provide, I think it's sixty hours of training a year for our staff and/or volunteers on equipment and things like that. So it's been a fantastic relationship over the years, and I expect that it will, it will continue. There is a, an out clause, but it requires us, it's, it's one year to give them an opportunity to get, to get other space. So if we ever felt that we needed that space here at the high school and GTV needed to relocate, we just have to let them know, and then they have, they would obviously need to find other space. But we don't envision, envision that, you know, at this particular point. So far, it's been, like I said, excellent relationship.
Ellen had her hand up.
Just a point of clarification, disagreement is needed between the school district and the town of Goffstown because the town of Goffstown owns GTV, and they're using school space. And that's the reason there is a needed agreement. I think a lot of people think it's whole school operation, and there's some, sometimes in people's minds, there's confusion. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Ellen. Anybody have any questions for Scott? Okay, we're going to need a motion to approve this lease for another five years.
So moved.
By Jared. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Motion passed. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on to board authorization requested. Board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergencies, operation plans for COVID-nineteen as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF, pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designate authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances, and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting. Have a motion?
So moved.
By Ellen. Do I have a second? By Terry. And I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Next one is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting.
So moved.
By Ellen. Do I have a second? By Shane. I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Shane, uh, Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Motion passed. School staffing, you have a sheet in front of you.
Yeah, everyone should have a sheet in your packet. So the first is just a notification that we have a teacher transfer for Maddie Leone, who will be going from being split between Maple and Glen Lake to being one hundred percent at Glen Lake as a speech pathologist. So that's just a notification for you, for your approval. We have two resignations, one for Beth Conley, Beth Coyle, Don Lee, Donald Coyle. I always called her, she's just Beth Coyle to me. But Beth is moving with her family to the West Coast, so we're happy for Beth and sad to lose her. She's listed as a school counselor, but really, she is a clinical social worker and has worked really closely with some of our really challenging students and has been a, a great addition to our staff for, I think, thirteen or fourteen years at this point. So I wish Beth well. And Matt Lyons, sorry to lose, is a science teacher at Mountain View.
All right, so we'll need a motion to accept the resignations.
So moved.
By Ellen. Do I have a second? By Ginny?
With regret.
Yes, with regret. I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Next one?
Next for approval, we have a teacher nomination for Kelsey Jardine in a math position here at the high school. I know that Mrs. Berry interviewed her and has gone through the process at the high school. I, I have not met her myself yet, but we'll have a lot of hiring that we'll be doing. This is this time of the year where you'll start to see more and more names that we're hiring people. And she comes to us, I think, with some experience out of Maine. So, and worked in Vermont, I guess, as well. So I, I do, I don't have an awful lot of information about her, but she's being recommended by the high school.
I'll move approval.
All right, I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Shane. I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. And then the new request.
Yeah, and lastly, I had mentioned this at a previous meeting, and I, I needed a little more information, but we have a recommendation, and I think the board is aware that speech and speech and language services is an area that we have struggled tremendously with in terms of recruitment and retention of staff. We have a couple of speech and language assistants that we have added to our arsenal of services over the last couple of years. And this request is to add a half an hour. It's actually fifteen minutes at the beginning of the day and fifteen minutes at the end of the day for documentation and paperwork and planning for the next day. This would be for all of next school year for a total cost of eight thousand and fifty-seven dollars. So this would be a half-hour increase for a speech assistant, which I do support. And there is sufficient funds to cover this. So I didn't have all that information two weeks ago, so I appreciate that I've got some additional information. Eight thousand fifty-seven dollars for all of next year.
For a support, for a support person, not for a pathologist, but for an assistant.
Correct. And this is an employee. This is not a contracted service.
And are we asking for an additional one, or just adding time on to?
Just adding time to this existing one.
Okay. I'll move approval.
All right, by Ellen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Jared. Sorry, Janelle. Any other further questions for Brian? All right, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Motion passed. Is that it for school staffing? All right, perfect. Other business that may legally come before the meeting? Seeing none? All right, so we have some non-public tonight. I'm just going to read A.
Yep, that's fine.
This is a lot. We need to motion to go into non-public session RSA ninety-one dash A, semicolon, three, two, A, C, and K. We're going to go in A first, which is the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the discipline of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected. One, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests. meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
So moved.
By Jared. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen. I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?